I'd like to call the August 15th, 2022 Meeting of the Woodbridge Board of Ed to order at 7:04 this evening. With a reminder to all those watching and participating remotely to kindly mute your microphones to avoid any background noise. This meeting is being held as a hybrid meeting consistent with Public Act, Connecticut Public Act 22-3. The public may attend in person or electronically via WebEx. This meeting is being recorded and the recording will be available at the district website. At this time, I'd like to call both. Ms. Sarah Beth Delprey.
She texted, she's trying to get us.
Okay. Oh, perfect. So we'll come back to her. Dr. Jay Daya. Ms. Brooke Hopkins.
Present.
You. Mr. Jeff Hughes.
Here.
Is it? Mr. Stephen Lawrence.
Present.
Uh, Dr. Michael Strampler. Yeah. Ms. Erin Williamson.
Present. I'm switching from my phone to computer.
I'm Maria Madonick. I would like to welcome everyone tonight. Staff in attendance this evening include Ms. Christine Siriac, interim superintendent, Ms. Donna Koonin, Director of Business and Operations, Ms. Carrie Borsherting, Director of Special Services, Ms. Annalisa Sherman, Principal, Mr. James Sapias, Assistant Principal, Ms. Marcia DiGennaro, Clerk of the Board. Um, at this time, we'd like to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. All nations, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. The next item that we have is correspondence. All emails and letters that have been received as board correspondence prior to 4:00 PM this evening today have been posted in Board Book along with the agenda. At this time, the Board would like to take public comment. Kindly raise your hand in the participant list. There is not any public in attendance here at the school today. I don't see any. Uh, Sarah Beth is here as well. Where's that? I don't see any public comment. Uh, so we will go ahead down the agenda to PTO update from Ruchi Jane. We'd like to welcome Ruchi as the new PTO President for the 2223 school year. Um, a written report from the PTO can be found in Board Book and this will help us to streamline our meetings and also help to get some communication out to the entire community. So thank you so much, Ruchi, for joining us.
Thank you, Maria. Uh, and, uh, good evening, everyone. I hope everyone is having a good summer and making sure to enjoy last few weeks before the rush of school year starts, right? Although I'm looking for the school year also. Being kids back in school. Um, and as, uh, Maria, you mentioned, I'm going to submit these, I thought, the highlights, but please feel free to ask any question during the meeting if you have any, like, detailed, like, you know, you have any clarification or send an email, but I thought respecting everyone's time, the highlights might be more useful rather than a detailed one pager or two pages. So, uh, during the, this last few months, last two months at PTO, we are taking it slow. We are a new group. We're trying to get to know each other and also a lot of new parents are joining. But in the process, there are a few things which we are doing and that I would like to highlight. So we had our first community social, but only for the new incoming kindergarten families. That was on July 30th. It was a great weather, low-key event and a well, good turnout. We had 45 families who joined, so it was a nice event. And we have two more upcoming, uh, social events. One is for the Welcome Back Staff and Teachers Luncheon that we're doing on August 25th, Thursday. And then our Ice Cream Social. So our well-awaited Ice Cream Social is on Friday, this time September 2nd, from 5:30 to 7:30. I'll send a personal invite to the Board, but I'd like to invite right now whoever is present to be, uh, for the Board members to be present at Ice Cream Distribution Stations or actually have your independent table. Because I can tell you all the new parents have thousands of questions for the school administration and the Board and they are always happy to have admin and Board members at these events. And some operational updates. So for the community, the PT Board is a, uh, PTO website, webpage kind of thing. So we have been streamlining and any meetings which we have either executive or going forward, the general membership meetings. Uh, we are uploading all the agenda in minutes there. So our summer meetings, if anybody is interested, you can go there. If you have access to PT Board, you can access all those things. And we conducted a parent survey and a separate teacher survey. It's still open and, uh, we'll be probably reviewing the data in September meeting, September, uh, General Membership Meeting. Also, we revised the bylaws and drafted a budget which will be put to the General Membership Board during, uh, September, uh, PTO meeting. And last but not the least, PTO, uh, again, uh, decided to support the school with packing the first day packets, which is always fun. So we are doing that on August 25th. I'll bring a bunch of middle and high schoolers, like five to six, and we'll give them free food and some volunteer hours and they'll help us pack those packets. And, uh, we also ordered the Scholastic magazines again this year for all the grades from K to six, uh, in, towards the curriculum material support. That's it.
Thank you so much, Ruchi. And thank you for that. I'm sure the whole community is going to look forward to bringing back the Ice Cream Social at the beginning of the school year again. That's amazing. So thank you so much for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Okay. We're on to, uh, part two of our agenda, the Consent Agenda. The minutes from the July 18th regular meeting are included in this evening's consent agenda. Does anyone on the Board wish to extract the minutes from tonight's consent agenda? Going to scroll through WebEx. I don't see anyone. Nope. May I have a motion to accept Consent Agenda? Brooke? Do I have a second? Jeff? Okay. Want to take a vote? Any discussion? I don't see any. Will take a vote, uh, to accept the Consent Agenda? Uh, Jeff Hughes?
Yes.
Uh, Sarah Beth? I'll come back to Sarah Beth. Brooke Hopkins?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Stephen Lawrence?
Yes.
Erin Williamson?
Yes.
Uh, and I vote yes. Sarah Beth?
Sorry, I am here, yes.
Thank you so much. Okay, it's unanimous. Consent Agenda is accepted. Um, and on to, uh, reports. We have, uh, Woodbridge Board of Ed Committee Meeting Dates. That was supposed to be live information. Okay. This is your information. Those are included in the agenda packet. Those will be the committee meetings for the 2022, 2023, uh, school year. 3B Siriac Superintendent's Report.
Thank you. So I have a few things that I'd like to review with the Board of Education this evening. The first thing that I wanted to spend some time talking about is in regard to, um, the opening of school, which is only a few weeks away. Our students start on August 29th. Um, our new, uh, staff employees start next Monday on the 22nd and all of our returning teachers and staff members, um, come back to us next Tuesday, the 23rd. Uh, we have professional learning planned for the entire week. I will forward the agendas on to the Board of Education in my weekly update this week for the Board of Education. Um, so we're looking forward to an extremely busy week, the week leading up to our students returning. Um, and Lisa may have some more information to share with you in a few minutes. However, I just want to give a shout out to, um, Vida Esparo and his team in regard to all the work that they're doing to prepare the building for the opening of school. Um, you know, they put many things off to the summer so that they don't disrupt the educational process. So they, you know, do all the emergency testing and security and things of that nature during the summer, yet the building's really never empty during the summer, as we know. So they're working around our three summer programs that were here at this school. They're working around recreation programs that are here at the school. So I really give them kudos for all their hard work and all that they're able to accomplish in a building that is really never empty. Um, in addition to that, um, our hiring continues. Um, we are still looking for one additional classroom teacher. Um, we are looking for seven paraeducators and we are looking for a school nurse. Um, if you listen to what's happening across the country and even across the state of Connecticut, I feel that we are really in a very good position compared to what some other districts are struggling with in regard to the number of, um, positions they still have to fill. I'm confident that we will be able to fill most of those positions, if not by the first day of school, within the first few weeks of school. Um, the other thing that I wanted to, uh, spend just a little bit of time going over is, um, I will be sending a letter out to parents on Wednesday and contained in that Welcome Back to School Letter will be some information in regard to our COVID-19 protocols for the start of school. Um, I had shared with the Board of Education that the state is calling this the Launching into Healthy Learning Initiative and they have provided districts with some guidelines for us to utilize. However, decisions remain in local, um, control and there are no executive orders remaining. So what I'm doing is I'm taking the, um, document that was developed, which was entitled "The Safe Return to In-Person Instruction", and I am making a few adjustments to that. Really, nothing much is going to change from when school concluded in June. However, there are a few things that I want to highlight for families and for staff. So I'm going to review those changes with you this evening. Um, one of the changes is in regard to, um, when people are not feeling well and coming to school. Um, the guidance now states that students and staff are expected to stay at home if experiencing a fever. Um, so we continue to suggest that people not come to school with a fever and that has always been a condition. It really is unrelated to COVID, but when you have a fever, you should stay home until you are fever-free for 24 hours without medication. However, I will be highlighting into the Launching into Healthy Learning where what the guidance is, is they are trying to help people make a decision about, is my child or am I, as an employee, healthy enough to go to work today? And as we know, for the past several years, it has been very confusing when we think that we might just be suffering from allergies. Not that that's a just, but you know, suffering from allergies and/or possibly have a very mild respiratory common cold. So what the guidelines are providing is that if you have a fever, you stay home. If you have very mild symptoms, then what they recommend that you do is that you test at home. And if the test is negative and if you and/or your child feels well enough to attend school, that then they may do so. However, they should test every morning until the symptoms are gone. Um, again, if they test positive and/or if they have a fever, they should remain at home. So it's just trying to provide an avenue for us to try to differentiate between allergies and the common cold and what would be a more serious respiratory illness. Um, so that guidance will be explained in more detail in the information that I send home to parents and I will include the documents from the state along with that. Another change is in that COVID-19 positive cases will need to isolate for only five days. At the end of five days, again, if you are fever-free for 24 hours without medication, at that point, you would be able to return to work if you felt up to it for days, you know, six and on. So COVID-19 positive cases will isolate for a minimum of five days and we are asking that you contact the school nurse, both students and employees, because we are still required to track our COVID-19 positive cases. And at that point, the nurse will provide other direction and/or provide, um, answers to any questions that you may have. If a COVID-positive case decides to return to work or school on day six, they will be required to wear a mask for days six through 10. We are keeping our mask choice policy, that people can make their own decision in regard to whether or not they want to wear a mask, with the one exception being that if you were a COVID-positive case and you would like to return to work prior to the 10 days, you must mask for days six through 10. Um, Project COVID Detect has ended. That was the program that the district was providing if employees and/or students wanted to test while here at work. The state has ended that program, so we will no longer have testing available here at Beecher Road School. However, what we will have available are ample free COVID testing. So, um, test kits for you to take home. They are available and I will share that in the letter, how you can access them. And I will also have them available during our open house so that, uh, parents can pick up as many as they would like at that particular time. Uh, so those are the major changes and really they're not major changes. Um, and I will be posting them. They'll be reviewed with staff next week during our professional learning days. And this year, we will have three nurses on staff every day in the health office to assist us through this process. They will be keeping the record-keeping for the state of Connecticut in regard to our positive cases. And as had been discontinued in the spring, we will no longer be doing contact tracing. A different change, but unrelated to the Launching into Healthy Learning or the previous document is that there was a Public Act passed through the legislative process. And what that states is that we are no longer permitted to have our teachers do dual instruction at any particular point in time. And what that means is that teachers are not able to teach their in-person learners while also, um, streaming in their classroom to remote learners. So I know that may be a change for some, um, parents when your child is at home and not able to attend school. Uh, we will develop a process for how you can access work for your child. However, it would not be through joining in, in remote learning to the classroom. So I just wanted to clarify that and you will get more information about that, um, from administration in regard to how to request homework or work to do while your child is out of the building ill. The next thing I just want to share with the Board of Education is the current enrollment numbers. Um, I will send you the updated numbers tomorrow. Um, however, between the last time we spoke at the July 18th meeting and tonight, we have, uh, four additional students. Now, what that doesn't mean is that, um, it didn't impact any particular grade because we had some students come in and some students come out. And what you will see is that where kindergarten was 106 students on July 18th, it's currently at 108 students. So that's plus two. Um, when we look at some of the other grades, some of them are down one. Some of them had no change. Some of them are down two. Um, the largest increase of students currently from the last time we spoke was at grade one. Um, however, based on the current numbers, we are not adding an additional section at any of the grade levels. The grade levels are balanced between themselves in regard to the current class sizes, um, as you will see in the documentation, documentation, documentation I send home. So when we met the last time, there were 834 students enrolled in grades K through six and currently we are at 838 students enrolled in grades K through six. In addition to that, we have 17 students currently enrolled in our pre-K program for a total enrollment of 855 students. And the last thing I want to share with the Board of Education is just a very brief update on the strategic planning process. Um, the next step that will happen will happen on September 8th. Judy Wilson, who is the consultant that was brought in to do this work in the district, will meet with the co-chairs from the three goal committees and she will help them to develop a process for when they then meet in their small groups to develop an action plan moving forward. It will be an 18-month action plan. The groups will meet in October, November and December to develop that action plan. And we hope to begin to implement the plan in January of 2023 and it will carry you through to January 2024. The strategic plan in and of itself is a five-year plan. So sometime prior to June of 2024, you would meet again and reflect and decide how to expand the plan out further based on how things are going at that point in time. And that's all I have for that section.
Thank you very much. Um, our next item of business under this section is adopting the revised 2022/2023 calendar.
Would you? Yeah, so in regard to the school calendar, um, when I came on board, I noticed that school was scheduled to be in session for students and staff on January 2nd. Um, when January 1st falls on a Sunday, it's a very unique year in the schools in Connecticut in that, um, we are required to then recognize the holiday on January 2nd. It falls on a Sunday and it's recognized on January 2nd. We are not allowed to say that we are recognizing it on the Friday before. Um, so what has happened is I've presented a new calendar to you and we will need to close school on January 2nd, that Monday, and we will add that day to the end of the school year. So now the last day being an early release date would be June 12th. I don't know if they have any questions.
Any questions from Board members? I'm just going to scroll through the best here. I don't see. Okay. Uh, can I have a motion that we move to revise the 2022/2023 calendar as presented? I see Brooke. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Jeff? Is there any discussion from Board members? Sarah Beth? Erin? No. Jay, Stephen?
No, I would just note Jay is on now.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Hi, Jay, how are you?
Good. It's the middle of the night, so I'm going to be very quiet.
Okay. All right. Uh, I'd like to take the vote on revising the 2022/2023 calendar as presented. Uh, Sarah Beth?
Yes.
Erin? Yes.
Yes.
Brooke?
Yes.
Yeah. S.J.?
Yes.
Yes, Jeff?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, Stephen?
Yes.
Yes, and I vote yes. Uh, it's unanimous. Marcia, thank you. Turn the water. That's okay. All right. Uh, next we have our Beecher Road School update, uh, from Ms. Lisa Sherman.
Evening, everybody. Thanks so much for allowing me to be with you tonight. I hope that you have all been enjoying the summer and having lots of opportunities to be with family and get outside and play. So just a few updates. As Christine mentioned, the Beecher Road School is never really truly empty and this summer proved no exception. We had a number of things happening in the building all summer long. Um, one of the most important things to mention is the summer curriculum work that happened over the summer. A number of teachers across different grade levels spent time this summer reviewing and revising their curriculum in math and literacy primarily. So I'm sure we'll provide future updates about that coming up in the months ahead and we definitely have some opportunities at the beginning of the year for teachers to share that work with their grade level PLC teams and have the opportunity to review some of the work that was done this summer. We also had a number of summer programmings happening. Uh, we had our Extended School Year Program, our Summer Learning Academy and our Summer Enrichment Program. Our building was filled with children engaging in learning and really, really fun activities. There was cardboard creations and spy school and baking and arts happening and there was a lot of really, really great learning and a lot of really great reading and math happening with all of our students during the summer months as well. So it was really fun to have them all here and engaging in some fun summer learning. Again, a kudos. I just want to give a shout out to our custodial crew and our secretarial staff. They have been diligently working to get the building and the school and the staff ready to go for the start of the year and we definitely wouldn't be able to do it without them. So I just want to publicly thank all of them for their hard work over the summer to get us ready to start and launch the year. Most importantly, our class lists, I know this is what everybody wants to know about, our class lists will be coming out. They will be mailed out by the end of this week and look also for an email where you can log into your Power School Parent Portal and update that information and even find out your child's teacher that way. So look for those letters coming to your mailboxes or an email coming to you very, very soon and you will be able to check things out electronically and as well allow your child to get their special letter from their teacher and get to know who their teacher is and look forward to the start of the school year. That's it for me for now.
Thank you so much, Lisa. I appreciate that. I'm sure everyone's excited to, uh, find out their path for this coming school year. I know there's excitement in the community about that. Thank you so much. Okay. Uh, next we have our committee reports and many of our committees have been on a summer break as well. Um, but our Policy Committee has been meeting, um, May, June and July, uh, working on Policy 0523, which is our Equity and Diversity, uh, policy. Uh, we've been working on this. This policy in the, uh, below the 1,000s and the zeros, um, really reflect the mission, goals and objectives of the Board. So that is where this policy sits. And, you know, the purpose of this policy is was to establish a framework for educational equity and inclusion for all students and promote teaching and learning and work environments that welcome, respect and value strength and diversity in our community. Um, so included in Board Book is the copy of the new policy and that was drafted, uh, by the Policy Committee with input from the community as well as all members from the Board of Education. Does anyone want to make a motion to adopt Policy 0523 Equity and Diversity? Erin? Is there a second? Steven? Thank you. Um, and now I'd like to open up any discussion from the board. And I can't see everyone on your WebEx screen, so please feel free to jump in. I'm just gonna scroll through.
Maria?
Yes.
Um, I just, I had a question. I was wondering if we could still go over a few things. I know we spent a lot of time on this. I feel like there's a few things that still weren't corrected or reflected from our meeting when I was looking at my notes going back and forth. Um, I don't know, what does that mean if we like push this forward, push this out for the next review to still go through this a little bit?
Sure. Was there a particular line that wasn't?
I mean, there were just a few, I guess. I mean, I don't know if now is the time to go through and ferret out each one. I don't know if anyone else had any questions first before I do that. I don't know. Um, I, I don't know. I mean, yeah, there were kind of a few, I thought, but that could have been my recollection. I don't know.
No, sure, because we could, we, you know, we could make a mo- we could uh, the motion could be to adopt it with a revision. Was there a particular um line that was overlooked in one of the revisions?
I thought so. I thought there was one under the board is committed to hiring. I thought that we got rid of um promoting diversity because obviously we do that. Um, I thought we got rid of, rid of the word promote so that it sounds like we're not just promoting diversity. We're, we want to promote education and the academics. But again, that could have been my.
What, which line was that?
It was the second paragraph on the second page, the board is committed to hiring.
Oh, okay, I see. Hold on. I'm coming. Yeah. So you mean just the whole second sentence?
Yeah, it still just seems, wait, let's see, the district shall support and promote diversity in its staff through recruitment, employment, training, and retention of high levels. So it's important that all students themselves. Yeah, I mean, like promoting diversity. We, we are a diverse community, so like, do we promote it? It just sounds like that's what we're putting forth over academics.
Yeah.
Did it read that way?
To go off of what Brooke's saying, I guess I would want to know, like, what does that look like? What does that mean for the school if we're saying we do that? What is, I mean, support versus promote, what would?
Like, we support diversity, obviously. We have a diverse community.
Right. Well, this isn't, so the section that this is under in our board policies is under the mission. So this doesn't necessarily prescribe.
Okay. And you talked about that, Maria. I'm sorry, yes, I.
That would be under that, you know, the hiring processes in the district that would go under a different um, a different series. So this was more like the mission statement as opposed to prescribing certain processes. Um, but it sounds like uh support of removing and promote?
Uh, that makes me feel better.
Okay. Sure.
Just get myself a meeting. Um, so that was my concern too, is, you know, fully support diversity, super important. Um, but like the word promote happens four times in this document. So I'm just concerned that it'll take over academics as a mission. I want to always support diversity, but I don't always want to promote it, if you understand what I'm saying. I think a lot of times when diversity gets promoted, it goes in the other direction. Um, so again, maybe to touch out what Brooke was saying, um, I know it's the word promote too, and that's just some language. I'd like to bring up the discussion.
Just in that section in chapter?
Yeah, it's, it's in a few. The district shall promote the diversification of its vendor. Um, district shall promote diversity. Um, it happens a few times in there. Um, so again, fully support. I just don't want it to take a forefront and promote it. That's just my.
Would you be comfortable with supplanting the word promote with support or removing promote? Like, when you're um, I'm looking at the last paragraph, Jeff, uh promoting providing equitable distribution of resources. Would you be comfortable, the district is committed to supporting and providing?
Yes, I would. And then the line below it, the district shall promote the diversification of its vendor as well. I think we always want to support the diversification of our vendor, but to actively promote um my, my previous direction.
And changing that, so the last line to support as well?
Yes, thank you.
And hold on, let me just change it in my notes, Brooke, where you brought it up. Um, and that was the second paragraph on the second page, right, Brooke?
Yeah.
Okay, just removing and promote.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'm just skimming the first page quickly, just to make sure we're not leaving um.
Maria, I have a question, if you're ready to, a few seconds, if I could ask, if I could just ask Brooke and Jeff, um, if they would just sort of explain to me the difference between the two in, in their eyes. Because when I see promote and support, I'm seeing them rather as synonyms uh and not sort of replacements or substitutes for something else. So for example, I'm not seeing them saying anything about educational achievement. I don't see that as a replacement. And so I think it's good where you're suggesting that we promote and support. If we could use both of those terms, I'd be more than happy to support that.
Uh, for me, so promoting, I feel like we're going out looking for it. We're just going to hone in on the diverse students and like promoting that, putting, picking, just promoting that, not academics as a whole. So like, we obviously support diversity of students that are in our school. I mean, I would imagine that goes without saying. So even having this whole statement, I guess I was always kind of wondering why we had to have this because I feel like our district does do this, but I'm speaking just from my experience. So I think promoting, I feel like a promoter, like we're going out promoting it, talking about it, diversity, 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 instead of just focusing on the education that all students, diverse or not, are able to, to achieve.
So Brooke, that's really good.
We're supporting a diverse student, but promoting, it's like you're out promoting this. And I don't see why you need to promote someone's diversity.
So Brooke, that's, that's a good point. But what I've heard from Lisa and what I've heard from the administration consistently is that um diversity and inclusion and equity is embedded in everything we do in terms of educational delivery, in terms of hiring and recruitment, in terms of our deliverables to our students, to create a global citizen. And so I don't see, personally, I don't see that as a sort of replacing any aspect of educational achievement. I actually see it as reinforcing and sort of building on what we do in the classroom. And I think that's what I hear from Lisa. I, I've heard from Jonathan previously. I believe Christine has mentioned something very similar to me. And so I see this as really enhancing what we do. And so in terms of using the language, okay, I can see what you're saying to me, but I, I sense that some, I think it's important to understand it's promotion in the terms of, you know, embedding it within the curriculum, not replacing any part of the curriculum, but building on it. And so I, I, I maybe have a different lens to you on this. And so I think we're just sort of trying to get that across, that I, I think it's really enhancing is the way I see it, not sort of replacing as you might see it. I hope that sort of comes through. It is like two o'clock in the morning here.
So thi- this is Sarah Beth. I, my question would be like, going back to it, what does that look like then? If, what does promoting it looks, look like? What does that entail? Or what are we maybe not, what are we replacing if we're spending time doing that? If that makes sense.
Well, I, this, you know, again, this policy belongs in where our mission statements and our goals are. So we're not, this isn't prescribing a curriculum or prescribing a policy or prescribing a set of rules that then the district or the school should follow. This is explaining what our value system is, that we do support and appreciate the diversity that we do have in our community and that we want all students to be able to equitably reach high academic achievement within our district. And we realize that there may be barriers to that. And as a district, we're looking to make sure that we pay attention to those and we make sure that all students can equitably reach high academic achievement in our district. Um, and so far as prescribing, you know, curriculum or processes for hiring, that happens within other policies within our district. This is really stating just a mission and our values. This isn't going to prescribe a curriculum change. This isn't going to prescribe a hiring change. This is going to just codify within our values and mission statements at the beginning of our policy, our board policies for the district, that we do support and celebrate the diversity in our community. And we are actively making sure that all students can equitably reach high achievement in our district.
Can I just have? Sorry, this is Erin. I would also just encourage us to not think of this as a zero sum um where in order to add, we have to take a, take away from something else. I think that we can walk and chew gum at the same time. I think we absolutely are a district that supports strong academic achievements. I absolutely don't want to see academic achievement weakened or lessened in any way whatsoever. I think it's why a lot of us moved into this district. Um, I also think we can do that while also supporting diversity. And so I, I don't think we have to think of this as, well, if we do this, what are we removing? And, and I would challenge us, like, we don't think of any other policies in that way. And so I don't think we should think about this policy in that way because when we add in other things, we're not saying, well, what is this gonna take away from? So I just, again, I, I think we have a, an amazing school district. We have some wonderful teachers. I, I think to Jay's point, to Maria's point, whenever we talk with Lisa or any of the administrators about this work, it's stuff that they're doing alongside the academic work in terms of enhancement. And again, like, this is just making sure everybody walks into that school, feels welcome, making sure that everyone that walks into that school recognizes that there is a home here for them and that we support them no matter what their needs are. Um, and so I, again, I just, I, I get a little worried when we talk about the, if we're doing this, then what about that? Because I don't think that's the case, and I don't think we ask that about other policies.
With that said. I know there are too many of us on. Oh, sorry. Um, with that said, I, I do think, you know, changing tho- those three points of wording um can be helpful to the policy, and we can certainly incorporate that in. I think that that still um absolutely expresses what our values are. Um, and I think that that, you know, wording sort of helps the community understand that what we meant by that other word was the support. So I'm, I absolutely think that that is help, very helpful. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, if I can. Maria, um, you and Erin both put it so well and eloquently, fully support it, but you also described it without using the word promote. So that's just kind of the language I like to see. Fully get the mission. Um, to me, when you say the district shall support and promote diversity, it's like an extra step. So I'm just adding a little extra step to the question. So thank you.
Especially from a new policy. So what I, is there any other discussion? I'm gonna scroll through, and please just shout out board members if I'm on a different page here on WebEx. Okay. Um, would anyone like to revise the motion to move that we adopt policy oh-five-two-three equity and diversity? Um, removing promote in paragraph four, nine, six, and in paragraph seven, and the last sentence, eight, uh changing to promoting to, to supporting with those three changes? Uh, Erin? Do I have a second? Brooke? Okay. Uh, any further discussion on this motion, this revised motion?
If I just may give some kudos to the committee, I mean, uh, a very hard policy and only asking the three words if we change is quite incredible. So, nice work.
I'd like to second Jeff.
Very happy to have such a collaborative effort from the whole board. Oh, my apologies, Jay. I'm sorry for the delay.
I'd like, sorry, I'm far away. I'd like to second Jeff's comment. I think the policy committee did a great job, a collaborative effort, and I think it was excellent work. I, you know, very pleased with the progress. And I think this puts us in line with, you know, CAE, puts us in line with the states and other peer schools too. And so I think that's important for us.
Yes, our neighbors in Bethany have also um, in, in their own way, have adopted a similar policy as well. Uh, brings us in line. Thank you. Thank you both for those comments. We appreciated it. It, it was a few long meetings for, for us, but we did, right, Brooke? Okay, uh, okay, I'd like to follow vote then on the revised motion to adopt the policy with those three changes. Uh, Sarah Beth?
Yes.
Uh, Jay?
Yes.
Brooke?
Yes, with those revisions, yes.
Yes, yes, with the, we're voting on yes, with, with the three revisions. Absolutely. Uh, Jeff?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
Uh, and I vote yes. Uh, that's unanimous. Marsha, thank you. Uh, next item of business is the CAE liaison report. Uh, and the only thing uh to report is that the early registration for the CAES-CATS convention, which is November eighteenth to nineteenth uh in Mystic, ends on August twenty-eighth. Um, I am attending. I know several of you have already signed up to attend. So if you haven't already um asked to attend, please email Marsha so that she can register you. Okay. Onto uh new business. Uh, we have uh to accept uh some staff resignations. Okay, I'd like to ask for a motion that we move to accept the resignation of Heather Trumfinchik effective July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two with regret. Is there a second? Jeff? Any discussion? I'm gonna call the roll again. Uh, Sarah Beth?
Yes.
Jay? Brooke?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
Uh, and I vote yes. That's unanimous, Marsha. Thank you. Um, I'd like to ask for a motion that we move to accept uh the resignation of Christina Kamnakis effective August fifth, twenty twenty-two with regret. Brooke? Can I have a second? Jeff? Any discussion? I'm gonna call the roll again. Uh, Sarah Beth?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Brooke?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Steven? Erin?
Yes.
And I vote yes, Marsha. And I vote yes, Marsha. Uh, and finally, I'd like to ask for a motion that we move to accept the resignation of Nancy Mechanics effective August 10th, 2022 with regret. Jay? Second. Brooke? Uh, Sarah Beth, I'm gonna call the roll for the vote. Sarah Beth?
Yes.
Jay? Yes. Uh, Brooke?
Yes.
Yes. Uh, Jeff?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
Yes, and I vote yes. Marsha, thank you very much. And thank you to everyone for their years of service at Beecher Road School. The next item on the agenda is to uh, offer public comment again. Board welcomes public participation. Um, so please raise your hand in the chat if you would like to speak uh, during public comment. And I'm just gonna scroll through the participant list. I don't see any public comments. We don't have executive session today. All right. Uh, there is no public comment tonight. Um, so that will conclude the business of our board meeting uh, this evening. Um, is there a motion to adjourn? Is it Brooke? Second, Steven? Okay. Okay, uh, gonna call the roll for motion to adjourn. Sarah Beth?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes, happy summer, everybody. Enjoy those last few days.
Brooke?
Yes.
Thank you. Jay?
Yes.
Good night.
Yes.
Steven? Yes, and I vote yes, Marsha. Thank you. It's unanimous. We're gonna adjourn. Board of Ed meeting at 7:56 PM. Thank you, everyone, for joining us.
Nice job, Maria.